This meeting is being livestreamed and I would ask you to silence any devices that may disrupt tonight's proceedings. Tonight, I would like to recognize we are meeting on the traditional lands and territory of the Mississaugas of the New Credit. In accordance with our bylaws, as Director of Education, it is my responsibility to chair tonight's meeting until the Board has the opportunity to determine its chair for the upcoming year. At that time, the chair will continue with the evening's proceedings. Our first item of business will be to approve tonight's agenda as distributed. You need a mover? Amy? Second her? Leah? All in favor? Do they got a vote? Oh, we don't know how to do it.
Because I can try.
Can we just do hands? Can we do it again? Okay, that passes. I would remind trustees of this opportunity to declare any potential conflict of interest with items on tonight's agenda. The next item on the agenda is the annual organizational meeting and the election of the Chair of the Board. As directed by Board bylaw, I will call for indications of interest in the position of Chair. Our practice is to draw names to allow all trustees an opportunity to indicate their interests or indicate support for any other trustee. Trustees who have confirmed their interest in the position of Chair may speak to their interests for a period not to exceed three minutes. The opportunity to speak will be in the same order on which their name was drawn and interest was expressed. All right? Wait, so they can witness.
Sure.
How you like my assistance? Leah Reynolds. Do you?
I'll pass, thank you.
This is for Chair. Joanna Oliver.
I thank you for the opportunity, but I will pass.
Trustee Jean Grey. Trustee Kelly Amis.
I would be honored to run.
Trustee Donna Daniele.
Thank you, but I respectfully decline.
Trustee Rochelle Pappin.
Thank you, but I respectfully decline.
Trustee Amy Collard.
Thank you, I will accept.
Trustee Andrea Grebentz.
I would be honored to be considered.
Trustee Ann Harvey Hope.
Thank you, I pass.
Trustee Kim Graves.
I will pass for this year, thank you.
And finally, trustee Tracy L. Harrison.
Thank you so much. I'm honored to serve with this group of trustees and I look forward to being part of the team as a trustee this year. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we have three trustees that have put forward their name to be Chair of the Board or be considered for Chair of the Board. And in the order that they came out will also be the order in which they will speak. So, the order will be trustee Kelly Amis first, trustee Amy Collard second, and trustee Andrea Grebentz third. So, we will now pass over to trustee Kelly Amis and you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. First, thank you for the opportunity to be your Chair this past year. I also offer my congratulations to all my fellow trustees as we are halfway through our term and have much to celebrate. Our continued growth, collaboration, and cooperation, all focused on student achievement and what is best for the Halton District School Board. We have worked together on some challenging issues and some great achievements: program viability consultations and decision on a Grade II F.I. entry point; labor negotiations, sanctions, and agreements; a balanced budget despite reducing funding; advocacy for increased provincial funding, concerns about holding elections in schools, coding, and EQAO; the multi-year plan, and our Inspire Awards Program. More opportunities will be challenging us in this coming year: the start of labor negotiations; advocating for funding for new schools due to continued growth; and the closing the Gap Initiative and renewal projects; and ongoing support for our community schools and the students that we serve. I haven't overlooked the program and accommodation review for Burlington Secondary Schools. The Burlington PAR will be difficult and challenging for the community and for our Board. It will put pressure on our Burlington trustees to support their communities and we need to be there to support them. As your Chair, I have the time to provide that support and also can provide counsel based on my previous experience and direct involvement in a PAR. You also know one of my strengths is my focus on communication. It is my intention to continue that focus this year by working on building the leadership capacity within our Board of Trustees, including facilitating and understanding of the roles of Chair and Vice Chair for trustees new to the role and who may wish to run next year. I am also committed to continuing our regular communication. My Chair's report is an important link between all trustees, as is our dialogue at this table, allowing us all to understand each other in the way we think. We all bring different strengths, experiences, and knowledge to this table, and I for one value all of your input and appreciate your perspectives. I believe we make better decisions because of it. I look forward to continuing our work to make our Committee of the Whole format an efficient way of prioritizing our agenda items without sacrificing our discussion or decision-making. It has become very evident we are all concerned about work-life balance, and I still believe there's work we can do in this regard. Communication goes hand-in-hand with being collaborative and accessible. Having previously served as Vice Chair and Chair, I believe my strengths will help lead this Board, not just at this table, but in other partnerships with our co-terminus Board and our local MPPs. We also need to explore other possibilities within and outside Halton, connecting with OPSPA and with other Boards to look at their best practices. I am, I believe a strong Chair should be a facilitator, a communicator, and have the time to make the commitment to represent the Board at its many activities. As your Chair, I have been its spokesperson at system-wide events, as well as with the Ministry and the media. As trustees, we bring a wide range of skills, experience, and knowledge and opinions to this table, helping us to provide a balance between the interests of a broader community...
Trustee Amis, can you wrap up this?
Yes. So, as your Chair, I will encourage all our different viewpoints, respect the very perspectives. I'd like to thank you for your support for Chair for last year. I believe my strengths and attributes would be an asset to the challenges we'll be facing this upcoming year and would be honored and appreciative of your continued support for the upcoming year. I look forward to continuing our work together as we promote public education in Halton.
Thank you. Trustee Amy Collard.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to my interest in the role of Chair. Earlier this year, we approved a new multi-year plan, which was the product of several months of facilitated sessions with senior staff and consultations with the community. This four-year plan focuses on the values of equity, collaboration, accountability, integrity, creativity, and empathy. As your Chair, I will seek your input on ways to incorporate these values into the governance of our Board. The importance of equity and inclusion cannot be understated, especially in a world where intolerance is becoming normalized. Canada is a welcoming beacon of hope for all who are marginalized, and our Board is recognized as a leader in this area. As your Chair, I will actively and intentionally support inclusive practices and I will engage you in this dialogue. This Board has done tremendous work to demonstrate our commitment to every student and staff member, and I look forward to your thoughts on how we can move forward with this important obligation to every person in our Board. Information is at the fingertips of our communities, but that doesn't mean that our messages are being received and understood. We need to reach out to people in creative ways with consistent and clear messaging to ensure that families know what's happening in our Board and to welcome them into the conversation. As your Chair, I will support opportunities to enhance our communication and collaboration with all stakeholders. Our work to update the Delegation's bylaw will give greater voice to the community and demonstrate our commitment to open and transparent processes, which will enhance public confidence in the accountability and integrity of the Board. We would like all of our meetings to be more effective and efficient. We've made great strides by creating a Committee of the Whole and are working on adding a consent agenda to our meetings. In addition, I would like us to have an open discussion about our meeting norms and build a consensus around how we wish to operate in the Boardroom. This will help us to concentrate our efforts on those areas that require our focus and attention, resulting in greater transparency and accountability. Some of you have indicated an interest in one day serving as Chair or Vice Chair. As your Chair, I will provide opportunities to expand your knowledge and understanding of the governance, policies, and processes of our Board. I will mentor you and share with you the opportunity to participate more fully. A truly mindful Chair knows when to lead, when to follow, and when to walk alongside. As your Chair, I will continue to have an open-door policy. I will listen to you, I will give you guidance when you ask, I will be intentionally collaborative on decisions that affect you, and I will use a consensus model as my guide. I will respect your individual creativity, knowledge, and experience, and I will come to you when I need your wise counsel. Above all, I will demonstrate humility, fairness, openness, and grace. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, trustee Collard. Trustee Grebentz.
Thank you, Director Miller. My fellow trustees, I've worked alongside each of you at one point or another over the past couple of years, and I believe that my actions and my words speak for themselves. Whether we worked together on a committee forming policy, or working on committees together in equity, mental health, innovation, and information technology, on the Parent Involvement Steering Committee, on our own Committee of the Whole, or even just sitting down to figure out how to make Google Drive do what you want it to, I have approached each situation as a collaborative one. When I brought new motions to the table about extreme weather, flexible timetable programs, and requesting computer coding being added to the curriculum, I consulted with you, I listened to you, and I adjusted my course as perspectives came to light. In the other part of my life, I am an IT consultant. I opened my business 17 years ago, and I have often been dropped into new situations where I could either sink or swim. I know I do not have all of the answers, but I'm not afraid to admit it and to reach out to those who may know more. Where possible, I would like to spread the wealth of community outreach opportunities with all trustees and help maintain the Halton District School Board's positive professional reputation within our communities and within the province as a whole. I believe everyone brings something to the table, and collectively, we can find solutions to the issues that face us. I, in the end, I would be honored to serve this Board as Chair. Thank you in advance for your consideration.
Thank you, trustee Grebentz. Now that all candidates have had the opportunity to speak, ballots will be distributed and the vote called. This year, our two scrutineers are Superintendent Veerman and Superintendent Cullen. I'm going to read this so everybody's aware of the rules of the game, so to speak, this part here. So, everyone's aware, "The scrutineers will provide me with the name of the candidate receiving the majority of votes cast by all trustees present, resulting in their election to the role of Chair. Should no candidate receive a majority of the votes cast, a further vote shall be held. The candidate receiving the least number of votes from the previous vote shall be eliminated from the slate of candidates. In the event that the candidate with the greatest number of votes did not receive a majority, and the two or more candidates with the least number of votes received the same number of votes, the names of the candidates tied with the lowest number of votes will be placed in a ballot box from which the Director shall draw one ballot. The candidate whose name is drawn will continue on to the next vote. Should there be a tie vote between the two candidates, the name of both candidates will be placed in a ballot box and one name drawn. The candidate whose ballot is drawn by the Director will serve as Chair for the coming year. Following the election of the Chair of the Board, the Chair will conduct the election Thank you. At this point, there is no majority. Sorry, trustee Grebentz received the lowest number of votes, so she drops out, and there Thank you. I know it's suspenseful, but I'd first like to thank Superintendent Veerman and Cullen for being the scrutineers. Your Chair for the upcoming year of Chair of the Board of Trustees will be Kelly Amis.
Thank you very much. So, now we'll go into the election for Vice Chair. So, the Director is going to pull the names.
Andrea Grebentz. Sorry, Andrea.
Better than Grebnek. I decline.
Trustee Jean Grey. Trustee Tracy L. Harrison.
Woo-hoo, not at the end this time. I want to thank everybody who puts their name forward, but it's not me. Thank you for the opportunity.
Trustee Ann Harvey Hope.
Thank you, no.
Trustee Donna Daniele.
There was so much capacity around this table. I know that's not where I'm needed, so I respectfully decline.
That's you.
No, I'm not running again.
Trustee Joanna Oliver.
Again, thank you for this opportunity, but I will decline. Thank you.
Trustee Rochelle Pappin. Trustee Amy Collard.
Thank you, no.
Trustee Leah Reynolds.
Thank you, but no.
Trustee Kim Graves.
I'm happy to allow my name to stand for consideration.
So, it is, the only trustee that put their name forward for Vice Chair was Kim Graves, so it's acclaimed. Does she still get to make a speech? You still get to make a speech?
She will.
I want to thank my two assistants, Zaid and Dasha, and Dale.
Can I have a motion to destroy the ballots, please? Trustee Grebentz, seconded by trustee Pappin. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. First, thank you to the Director for running the first part of the public meeting. I bet you'd like to do that on a regular basis. So, we're now to the inaugural address of the Chair. First, I would like to express my appreciation and thanks to all of my colleagues. I can't tell you how much it means to me for your continued support. I'd like to also congratulate Vice Chair Graves on being re-elected for Vice Chair. And I would also like to congratulate every single one of you, because for everything that you have done this, the past two years, you have made a big difference for the students of Halton. And you know, we're halfway through our term, so we've still got two years left. We are a group of leaders, and we've all had opportunities through the committees and here at the Board table to demonstrate that. This year, we have had challenges and opportunities. We had labor negotiations and sanctions, and we're one of the first in the province to settle with most of our unions, which I attribute to the good relationships that we have within our Board. We finished the program viability consultation, and we voted to have a Grade II entry point for French immersion. I believe this will allow us to continue to maintain our outstanding curriculum and initiatives in all our schools and classrooms across Halton, including programming for student success for both the English and French tracks. We created a new multi-year plan for the Board. This is the foundation for the future, looking forward to the 22nd century and making sure we are preparing our students and staff with the tools and opportunities they need. We recently passed the operational plan, which will lay the foundation for our VIPSAs and SIPSAs in our system. The Director has just finished his first year, and I think we can all agree, I believe unanimously, that we made the right decision, and we are looking forward to watching him inspire the system. As you know by nature, I'm an optimist, and I know many of you are as well. Collectively, we have the ability to effect change, to showcase excellence, and to promote public education, and that's why we're here, to support Halton's students in their achievement... and that's why we're here, to support Halton's students in their achievements and success. This year will have its challenges and opportunities. We have started a program and accommodation review for the high schools in Burlington, and I truly believe that through the community representation, they will do their best to come up with a solution that will be a compromise for the community. We still have some tough decisions to make, but by working together collaboratively, collaborat- collaboratively, sorry, together, thank you.
And I dropped my G's.
With each other, to seek out the information and the best possible solutions by engaging our parent communities and working with our provincial and municipal partners. I know we have the collective knowledge, diverse opinions, and perspectives that have only helped this Board grow stronger, and to continue leading in the province. There are still issues that we will be advocating for and preparing for, such as new schools, renewal, funding model, and closing the gap. But our strength in facing these issues is working collaboratively, I said it that time, as a team, and by respecting our different viewpoints and perspectives, and ultimately making benefits, decisions that will benefit the students. The Halton District School Board mission statement is, "Together, we inspire every student to learn, grow, succeed." I believe we are working together to make a difference for the students. As your Chair, my goal is to continue to be impartial, accessible, and collaborative. I will continue my commitment to communications, my respect for my colleagues and staff, and my promotion of public education in Halton. So I have a quote, and I don't know who it is, so it's anonymous. "Success does not lie in results, but in efforts. Being the best is not so important, doing the best is all that matters." I would like to thank you wholeheartedly, once again, for your continued support. It is an honor and a privilege to be your Chair for the coming year, thank you. Vice Chair Graves, do you have some words you would like to share?
Just a few, thank you. First, I want to say thank you to everyone. I'm not a very emotional person, but I found that a little bit emotional tonight, so thank you very much. And I wanted to thank you for your hard work and your support over the past years as I transitioned into the role of Vice Chair. What I offer you this year is not more of the same, but better of the same. All of us are learning and growing in our roles as trustees, and I certainly learned a lot and grew a lot over the past year as Vice Chair, and I look forward to continuing to do so. I really enjoy the work, especially sometimes the tough stuff. And in that regard, I wanted to thank you for your patience, support, advice, and ideas as we transitioned to a Committee of the Whole structure this year from our former committee structure. It's been a very gradual and iterative process, and it will continue to see improvements over the course of the next year. So I look forward to that work. I've endeavored to bring your voice to all of the decision-making, particularly around Committee of the Whole, and of course, I'm going to continue to do so in the coming year. So what my thoughts are just initially in starting out for another year is I'd like to circulate a stop-start continue and just get some feedback on what's working really well, what could we drop, and what, you know, what do we need to do to make further improvements as we go forward? So I can look for that. December is maybe a little bit busy, but I'll send it out and then hope to get some great feedback from you, so thank you very much again.
And I just wanted to follow up on something that Kim said. One of the things that we had discussed, but it was getting too close to this meeting, is to do a board review and to do a full, what have we done, where are we going, and what would we like to improve? So that's something, there's some formats we've been looking at, and we'll probably do that in January, so. So, yes, I was just going to ask, so we'll have a five-minute recess, and maybe we could have a picture in the middle with everyone? I know, sorry, go on. But, thank you, so can I have a motion to have a five-minute recess? Just pardon? Don't need a motion? Okay, we're having a recess.
...in our multi-year plan development. There's many people around this table, obviously tonight, and some in our audience as well. Let's see, our former Director Yuwali, who is instrumental in leading us through the development of our multi-year plan, which I know we're all extremely proud of. And of course, we've had lots of time to work with that plan and develop that plan over many months. And recently, we had an opportunity to share that from a high-level perspective with our system leaders. We're here today to talk to you about Phase 1 of our rollout to the system, to our schools, to our staffs, and to our various departments across the Board. This, of course, has been a culmination of many months of hard work. And Phase 1 of our rollout plan is to create awareness and to share our content marketing strategy across the system. And that's already begun. So I'm going to turn things over to Communications Officer Manager Marnie Denton, who will walk us through some of the highlights of our Phase 1 of our communication strategy.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The objective was, of course, to ensure that our staff were all familiar with the Board direction and see how their work contributes to everyone's growth and success, that's staff and students. On Friday, December 2nd, all schools in the Board and departments received posters for posting in a prominent location in their schools, as well as additional. There was one poster that was placked for the prominent location, others for staff rooms or offices. They also received our brochure, about 20 copies, and there are more available on request. As well, all JWS and New Street Departments received posters and will be receiving their brochures this week. The, in the package was a letter from David Boge, our Associate Director, asking staff and managers and principals to share that with their staff at their next staff meetings. Most of those staff meetings in schools happened this week. As well as the promotional materials, we also did a multi-year plan promotional video. The full version is 11 minutes. It is currently posted on my HDSB with direction to all administrators and department managers to show that at their upcoming staff meetings. We will post the video as well on the public website tomorrow. We wanted to share with you the video tonight. Credit for the video goes to staff members Jason Neisner, Kevin Raposo, whoops. Okay. And Caroline Brown, who collaborated on the production of the video. And also thanks to those who starred in the video, Stuart Miller, Kelly Amos, and our very own and very poised student trustees, Dasha Matportansky and Zaid Haj Ali. They did an excellent job, as you'll see. In the new year, in the new year, we will continue to promote the mission statement by providing schools and departments with more detailed explanation of why the multi-year plan is important and how it impacts everyone's work. This communication will be shared with staff, but also parents and school councils through the school websites, through principals' newsletters and blogs. And now Rob can introduce the video.
We're having some technical issues up here this evening, but we're going to do our best. Our Director is just wondering how he got such a credible bunch working for, leading the system. I know that's what he's thinking right now. It's okay, we have full confidence in ourselves. What you're about to see is a highlight video. So we've taken that full-length video, which will be shown in the system, and we've taken some highlights out of that, and so this is about four minutes in length to give you a bit of a taste and feel of what the full-length video looks like. So please sit back and enjoy.
Hello, everyone. We are proud to be presenting to you the Halton District School Board's 2016-2020 Multi-Year Plan. What exactly is it? Generally speaking, the plan is a blueprint to guide our collective actions for continual improvement over the next four years. The plan highlights our specific areas of focus organized by three themes: students, staff, and system. Within each of these themes, goals are organized by areas of engagement and achievement, stewardship and resources, and equity and well-being. Key themes you will see throughout this multi-year plan are mathematics, early literacy, special education, students in applied programs, student engagement, and safe and inclusive learning environments. It also contains new areas of focus this year that were not in our previous multi-year plan, including student well-being, caring, inclusive, and respectful organization, innovation, facility design, and learning climate, and how central staff work together to support the work in schools.
This plan was developed through the collaboration of trustees and the senior administration team by using data and feedback from a variety of sources, including staff and community members. Strategic planning and the development of the Board's multi-year plan is one of the most important goals of a school board. This plan will lay the foundation and direct the actions of staff across the system over the next four years.
As student trustees, we're very excited to be a part of the rollout of the multi-year plan, one of the most interesting areas of focus of the promise, innovation. The goal of the Halton District School Board is to prepare students for life after school. But it's important to recognize that the reality of this life after school today is very different from what it was five, 10, or 15 years ago. Innovation in an educational system is keeping up with and adjusting to changes in this life after school. For me, innovation is harnessing new groundbreaking and unconventional methods of teaching, learning, and technology so that we can better prepare our students for their futures.
We also like parts of the plan that reference students' sense of belonging and personal well-being. Both these areas are highly influenced by the climate and culture within a school. It is important to ensure that school is a place where students learn more than just information out of textbooks. Schools should be a place where they learn more about themselves and their capabilities, and slowly begin to understand where their place in the world is. In order for this complete picture of learning to exist, students must first feel comfortable enough to express themselves to the full extent and not be afraid to make mistakes because of limitations imposed on them by external forces. Safe spaces are places where we can express ourselves and share ideas in an environment where we aren't afraid of our ideas not being welcomed. This propels innovation and all of us reaching our full potential.
So how does the multi-year plan impact each of you? Both the multi-year plan and our annual operational plan should provide a larger picture for individual schools, central departments, and in fact, all staff across the system to frame their work. It is our hope each staff member sees their work as contributing to the larger system goals. Together, we can make a difference for our students. Our goal has been to create a plan that articulates what we believe is important in our system, and specifically, the areas of focus for the Halton District School Board during the next four years. We hope every staff member can see themselves in this plan and know the work they do has an impact. It is the collective impact of all of us, regardless of our roles, and whether we work in a school or centrally, that makes a difference in every classroom, every day, for every student. Together, all of us, Boards and trustees and all staff, we inspire every student to learn, grow, and succeed.
Thank you for that, and at this time, we'd like to do the official unveiling of our updated plaques that will reflect our work and guide our work within this boardroom for the next four years. So we'd ask our Chair and Vice Chair to partner up with our Director and Associate Director, two under each. Should we do a drum roll? Three, two, one.
Uh-oh. Can you reach that?
Thanks, Director Miller, that was great. That concludes our presentation.
They're very lovely.
Was that the end of your presentation? Well, they look amazing.
Marnie, before you go, I'd like to thank you and congratulate you on this. You gave a lot of credit to a lot of people this evening, and I think you also deserve a huge chunk of that credit. So thank you, Marnie, for all your work. This looks fantastic, the pamphlets look fantastic, and everything we've got going out looks really good. I could have probably done with a bit more makeup in the video, but other than that, it was great job. So thank you, Marnie and Rob, but thanks.
I totally agree. Does anyone have any comments or questions before Mrs. Denton leaves? I'd like to thank you and congratulate you on some really great work. And Associate Director Boge also had a little bit of a hand in it, so congratulations to you as well. Thank you very much, they look awesome, and I'll look forward to seeing them in the schools. Okay, so we're now up to our ratification items. Our first item is the minutes from the board meeting from November the 16th, 2016, on page two of your board package. Can I have a mover? Trustee Gray, seconded by trustee L. Harrison. Any discussion on the minutes from November 16th? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out in 4.2.5 about the audit committee member who left. It, it wasn't really leaving. I think the better word for it would be finished his third term or something. It seems a little abrupt. So, and the bursary was for one year, right? So maybe we could add 2016, 17, so that there's no confusion. Thank you. He's thrilled, by the way. I talked to his wife yesterday.
Can I ask?
Director Miller?
Trustee Harvey Hope, do you know if he has spoken with the principal of the school?
I don't think so.
Do you, do you know trustee Reynolds? Okay.
It happens to be his birthday, so I'm just trying to keep finding out if he's there.
Okay, so they, they should connect because Maria will sort out all the details of it and so on.
Thank you. If there's no further questions, all those in favor, you can do it on here. I know. Not yet. Who hasn't? Trustee Garbence? Okay, I'll end voting. She's not here. So that passes unanimously. Okay, our next item is approval of business transacted in private session. And I believe there's an item or two?
There are two items, yes. Apologize for the length of the first one. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board accept the tender from Everstrong Construction in the amount of $5,393,000 as contained in tender number RFT 16-287 for the Craig Kilburger Secondary School addition and greenhouse in Milton, Ontario contingent on final Ministry of Education approval to proceed. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board request the Ministry of Education approve the reassignment of build capacity in the amount of $1,500,000 to increase the original November 2015 project, project funding allocation for the 10 additional classrooms plus greenhouse at Craig Kilburger Secondary School. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve a budget of $7,223,199 for the construction of 10 additional classrooms plus greenhouse at Craig Kilburger Secondary School contingent on Ministry of Education approval to proceed. This project is to be financed from capital priorities funding as allocated by the Ministry of Education in November 2015 of $5,523,199. Request to the Ministry of Education for build capacity funding, $1,500,000, and accumulated surplus approved by the board in November 2014 of $200,000. And I so move.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Trustee Daniele. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none? Sorry, I don't think the motions are there. Thank you. I got them. Thank you. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. You have another motion?
Yes, be it resolved that the Halton District School Board accept the Director of Education's Annual Performance Review 2015-2016 as amended and distributed, and that the director schools for 2017 be approved in principle. And I so move.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Trustee Harvey Hope. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Trustee Harvey Hope. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Are there any other items?
That's everything for the tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. So we are now up to the order paper. Is there any comments or questions on the order paper tonight? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Just a simple one. M160160 should be shaded already. Probably can drop off because it's already incorporated in the financial statement. It was in early November 11. M160160 was the accumulated surplus internal transfers, so.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we will move on to our action items. The first item is the Grade 1 FI Parent Information Evenings. Associate Director Bog report 16167 on page 13 of your board package. Welcome, Associate Director Bog.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This report was before the board a few weeks back and is here for a decision. Our hope is that the board will support rescinding a previous board motion that will allow us to discontinue having Grade 1 Parent Information Evenings as there really is not the same need any longer that the French immersion program has changed. All SK students will remain in their home schools in their current English program. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'll also look to Superintendent Salmini as well, or to answer questions around program as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to add anything, Superintendent Salmini, or are you just prepared to answer questions?
Prepared to answer questions.
I'm going to put the motion on the floor then. Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board rescind board motion M130287 in recognition of the change to the entry to the board's early entry French immersion program. Moved by trustee Oliver, seconded by trustee Pappen. Any comments or questions? Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you for this report. My comments are going to be similar, but hopefully more focused to the ones that I made two weeks ago. The choice to enter French immersion is now between Grade 1 and Grade 2. While I absolutely support the availability of information on the board website, for some families, the decision to enter French immersion in Grade 2 means changing schools. One example is in Southwest Oakville, where students would move to Pine Grove, as you know, a single-track French immersion school. And while families are likely in large part basing their decision on program, which the materials on the website will certainly help them with, some may actually want to see the school experience the culture first before making that decision. So my question is, how can this be accommodated? Should that be the, the desire, the wish of those families? And if we do go ahead with the, I mean, it makes sense to cancel Grade 1 nights because that's not a transition, and it's a different transition. But is there any way to sort of track if this motion is approved to track those requests and so on so we can kind of be agile and accommodate families? Thanks.
Through you, Madam Chair, to trustee L. Harrison. I would agree that it would be our hope that families are making these decisions around program. That is the critical piece. And for a family who is looking for French immersion, this is their home school. And so I, I kind of reckon it to students when they're starting kindergarten, actually, and whether family, where, you know, they have a home school, a designated school, the majority of students don't have a lot, most of families don't have a lot of need to go and visit that school. They know that's their home school where they will attend. For some families where they do want to come and visit the school ahead of time, our principals do accommodate those kinds of things. We just need to be really careful around what that would look like. And so I would imagine it might look a little bit different in schools, but where requests are being made, principals might group, you know, a small group of families and, and have a time where they can, they can sit down and talk about the school, that sort of thing. So I don't think we'd say, I don't think a principal would say, no, you just can't come for a visit. But I would, I would think we'd want to watch that very carefully. We certainly could collect that, and I think it would be our intent that over the first couple of years, we'd monitor this to see how, how it goes, what kind of feedback we're getting, and whether we're getting lots of requests like, like those that you have just mentioned.
Thank you. You want to follow up?
I just want to clarify that the example I was giving, the families would in fact be switching schools. They would be moving from Grade 1 at a single-track English school to Grade 2 at a single-track French school, so a totally different facility. I understand where they're walking across the hallway. It might be a different scenario, but where they're switching schools to attend French immersion, that's where I see there could be some challenge.
And trustee L. Harrison, I did understand that. I guess I was just thinking that if they're entering the French immersion program, that becomes their new home school. So there's not, there's no shopping allowed. So that is the school, and we would hope that they're making the decision around program and not, not the school. But I, I do understand for some families, there might be an anxiety around leaving school, that sort of thing.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on this? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Through you, Madam Chair. I respectfully agree with trustee L. Harrison. I, I would not have had my children leave their home school and go to the single-track French immersion school without having step foot inside it. So I think you're going to end up having, have to come up with the way you are going to have requests from those of us in single-track environments. And even for those parents that are in a dual-track school, they want to know what this French immersion thing is. And the information on the board isn't going to be enough. And this report is titled Grade 1 FI Information Nights. It actually should be entitled Grade 1 Information Nights because it got changed to a Grade 1 Information Night a few years ago. I know the original motion was a Grade 1 FI night, but, and I agree, we don't need necessarily the Grade 1 Information Nights and the structure that they had. But we need to find a way for parents to understand the difference between FDK or kindergarten and Grade 1, and then again, the difference if they're making a decision between Grade 1 and Grade 2. So I, I don't exactly know how to vote on this because it's like, I agree, we should rescind the motion necessarily, but I disagree with the idea that we don't need these Information Nights.
Director Miller?
Yeah, I want to weigh in here. I'll, I'll take them separately. One is around the French immersion, and one is around the Information Nights for Grade 1. The Information Nights for French immersion, Grade 2, I understand when students may be changing schools, and parents may want to see that, and we have a year to figure that out, and we will track that to see if there is an issue. However, these students that are now choosing French immersion, them and their parents, it's a much, much bigger program decision now because they're choosing to go into 100% French immersion program, not a 50%. So there's a couple of parts to that. First, they're choosing to go into 100%. The second part is they will have spent a year with a Grade 1 teacher who will have been able to work with these students in an environment which may have been in English, but will not be dissimilar from what, the way, the, the technique, so to speak, or the manners in which Grade 2 will be taught. So I suspect that Grade 1, I don't suspect, I know Grade 1 teachers will be working with parents and discussing with parents around suitability for their children to go into a 100% French immersion program as opposed to a 50% French immersion program. In the past, I would argue that some parents, the stakes were not as high going from kindergarten to Grade 1, and, and some parents made the choice because it was a 50% model. 50% was English. So I suspect that the idea that this is a program decision is going to be increased as opposed to the school. However, I know our principals are accommodating, and if parents ask to go to a school to see it, the principals will accommodate them. And we'll monitor to see if that's a wave or, or a dribble. And if it's a dribble, we'll carry on. If it's a wave, we'll have to address it another way. But I do want to remind trustees, originally, these were French immersion program nights. They were changed to become for all Grade 1 students at the behest of the Board of Trustees because the concern was they were being used to recruit French immersion students. And so it was decided that they would become Grade 1 Information Nights, and English was part of it, which got it away from its original part. I would say that in many of those schools, our experiences currently with Grade 1 French, with Grade 1 nights, where it's, French immersion's not involved, we had very, very low turnouts. Sometimes half a dozen parents showed up. Sometimes four or five parents showed up. So, but in the ones that involve French immersion, lots of uptake, lots of people showed up and so on to take program. On the second question or the second issue you've raised about the difference between FDK and Grade 1, I don't, the transition, because these students, I have some views on this. I'm not going to discuss this evening, but I, I think that this transition is nowhere near as significant as it was when they're changing into a French immersion program from a kindergarten. They're in the same school. They're going from kindergarten to Grade 1, and they're actually, in some respects, going to a smaller class. They're going from possibly a class of 30 to a class of 20. So, and some of those transitions will occur within the school as Grade 1 teachers, be kindergarten teachers, et cetera, or the students and so on, because that goes on in our schools. So to ask our principals to do a Grade 1, a Grade 1 Information Night for students going from kindergarten to Grade 1 within the same school, I'm not, I, I'm certainly not convinced that this would be well-attended and that there's a, a big need for that. And in fact, I would even argue that, that we need to, we need to normalize things a wee bit. And going from kindergarten to Grade 1 is somewhat of a big deal, but it's not really a big deal. The kids are going in the same school, same language of instruction, et cetera. I get it that it's play-based versus the Grade 1, but, you know, I don't, I don't know it. I, I can't see that it's absolutely necessary because there will be transition work being done in the school at the time.
Thank you. Go ahead. Then can I maybe, I will come up with a report, I guess, to ask for the information. In my particular ward, people show up in Grade 1. They aren't in their schools in kindergarten. So, and I'm not too sure how this is going to play out with them staying out until Grade 2. So at, at some point, I guess we'll have to just do some data gathering as far as when they, when, when they start attending school. In a single-track environment, you will have children staying in the private system until they show up for Grade 2.
That's, okay. I think that's fine.
I guess we'll have to wait and see.
Yeah, we just got the data.
Trustee Collard.
Thank you. My concerns are similar, as I voiced three weeks ago. Entering an entirely new program, whether or not it's in your home school, parents are going to want information. And pointing them to the website is not the same as face-to-face, looking in someone's eyes, speaking to a teacher, seeing the materials, seeing the classroom, and experiencing what it would be like for your child to attend that school. I, I really am hesitant on this because, yes, it's no longer a Grade 1 Parent Information Evening. It, it becomes then, as I said three weeks ago, a situation where you have students going from senior kindergarten or FDK to to grade one English, and then going from grade one English and potentially choosing French immersion, which with the changes that we're making to French immersion, I would think we would want parents to have access to the information about what our program has evolved and become. And I'm really afraid that if we don't offer the grade two French immersion Information Night, there's going to be a great demand for it.
Director Miller.
Through you, Chair Amos. My concern is if we go back to what we were doing, and it becomes a grade two French Information Night, there's going to be the possibility that we're recruiting French immersion students, and then we're back at the same discussion that we had that caused us to go to grade one Information Nights. If we, if we only make it for grade two French immersion nights, that's exactly what it was prior to making them grade one Information Nights. They were grade one French immersion nights. And the concern was, at, at this table and in the community, was that we were using it to recruit French immersion students. If we go back and just do it for the grade twos, I can't see that the conditions are different, that we would, so therefore, we would then have to do a grade two Information Night across the board. And I can see no need for students that are in grade one English program and going to grade two English program in the same school. They may even have the same teacher and having an Information Night that evening. So it's, it's a challenge. I, I certainly understand it, which is why we're putting on the website. And I, I liked, I, I not liked, I guess, I, the suggestion by Vice Chair Graves around some regional evenings around program-specific. I think, well, that certainly could be worked into it. And we would certainly look at data, too, to see if we're wrong or right, and adopt accordingly, but I'm.
Yes, and one of the, one of the challenges that we did experience in the prior model was inconsistency from site to site in terms of the messaging as well. And so, you know, a regional approach, we talked about that at the last board meeting, or an online Q and A as well, might be a way to get consistent messaging out. So we haven't got schools sort of doing that, you know, potentially doing a recruitment or that sort of thing. So some consistency messaging across the system would be a good thing, I think.
Again, I, I would also reiterate that these students that are in grade one that are going to choose French immersion in grade two at 100%, they will have spent a full year in grade one. They choose in February, of course, but those conversations will be happening within the school. And I'm sure on parents' evenings, which are in November, that those discussions will come up with principals. They, when the kids were in kindergartens, that, those conversations didn't happen in quite the same manner that they will with the grade one nights, so.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Thanks, yeah, I just wanted to just sort of reiterate my position on, my, my agreement that the decision is about the program and should not be about the, the school. I understand, because these children are young, and there would be some apprehension, apprehension around transitioning to a new school, but perhaps a more appropriate place for that would not be prior to the point of decision, but after the point of decision. So in the same way, we might, a school might put on a, an orientation night where they invite kindergarten students in, then perhaps there would be a, a French immersion orientation night where they would invite those students and parents who have selected that program at that, that home school, and, and that would be a segue to be introduced into that environment. But the, I really do feel that it should be a program decision first, and this, a school decision, our, our home school, when they start JKS K, there, there's no choice in, in that decision. It's dependent on where you live. That's, that's the school you go to. And so I understand that the, the same reasoning is there for, for the French immersion is depending on where you live. If you choose that program, that is your home school. So on orientation, yes, I'd be supportive of rescinding this motion. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee L Harrison.
Thank you. I'll keep it brief. Through you, Madam Chair. Do we need to make a motion with respect to tracking data and so on? So we can re, so we can shift and adapt if, if needed? Because while I theoretically believe that program should be the primary driver, I do not believe in reality that a lot of people will do that, and we can't tell them how to make their family decisions. So should our assumption be need rejigging? It would be great to have that kind of information and be able to adapt quickly. Thanks.
Well, into that. Through Chair Amos, through trustee L Harrison. I don't think a motion's necessary. We were going to do it anyway, if for no other reason to make, to keep an eye on the workload of our principals and our staffs. So we, you know, we'll have to be looking at that in order to support our school administrators anyway. So I don't think a motion's necessary. We had planned to do it any, you know, all along. But, and this motion is about rescinding, not adding stuff, so.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers, all those in favor.
What's going on here?
We're waiting for Ann's vote.
Hold early, hold off.
Okay, well, I'll just end it. Okay. So that passes.
I can fix the machine.
So the next item is trustee professional developments. Trustee Collard, report 16172 on page 15 of your board package. Trustee Collard, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, I brought this forward three weeks ago. I believe we had some questions at that time. The one question that remained to be answered really was what was meant by update? And to me, an update is sharing of materials, sharing of notes, and any discussion that may be required due to anything regarding legislation or new programs that may be available. And I would like to move this motion.
Thank you. Can I put it on the table first? Pardon? We're putting the recommendation on his whole? Okay. Well, unless there's a question to divide. At the moment, I guess it's all one. Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board use a portion of the reserve account for trustee professional development to cover the registration costs for the trustees to attend the Ontario Public School Board Association Public Education Symposium, including the preregistration, to be held January 19th to 21st, 2017, maximum of $7,700. Upon return from this conference, trustees who attend will provide the board with an update. Two, be it resolved, the Halton District School Board use a portion of the reserve account for trustee professional development to cover the registration costs for the trustees to attend the Ontario Public School Board Association Labor Relations Symposium, including the pre-symposium, to be held in Toronto from April 6th to 7th, 2017, maximum of $5,500. Upon return from this conference, trustees will, who attend, will provide the board with an update. Three, be it resolved, the Halton District School Board use a portion of the board's leadership and team development account to cover the registration and accommodation costs for the Ospah HDSB Director versus, and the Ospah Central West Regional VP Chair to attend the 2017 Ospah AGM in Collingwood from June 8th to 11th, 2017, at a cost up to a maximum of $1,600 per participant. Upon return from the conference, the Ospah Directors and/or Ospah Central West Regional VP Chair will provide the board with an update. Four, be it resolved, the Halton District School Board use a portion of the board leadership and team development account to cover the accommodation and transportation costs for the student trustee mentor or the student trustee mentor alternate if the student trustee mentor is unavailable to attend for any reason, to accompany the student trustees to the Osta Eko Conference in Ottawa from February 16th to 19th, 2017, at a cost up to a maximum of $1,600. Upon return from this conference, the student trustee mentor or student trustee mentor alternate will provide the board with an update. Moved by trustee Collard, seconded by trustee Harvey Hope. Do we have any, sorry, discussion? Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, through you, Chair. I just would like to recommend that one of our upcoming Committee of the Whole meetings, that we formalize the process for sharing of information, what exactly, where is it going to be stored? I think it's great for knowledge sharing, but also knowledge transfer. So if somebody could remember that, to put it on the agenda, it'd be great. Thanks.
Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to throw my support again for this motion. It allows for better planning. It allows the Business Services Department to just say, yes, okay, that's the motion, and, and it probably needs an A, B, C, D when we, we come up with it, Ms. Gorbemaker, because other, we actually have to put a number in it, so we'll put the A, B, C, D. But it, we have the money for it. It is a good use for it, of the trustee PD. And just a heads up in that, in the Ospah AGM, it is very likely that we need to send two delegates to the AGM, because we may end up on the Sunday morning needing the second director. So we'll just keep that in mind, and that was one of the reasons why it was worded such the way it was, in that we may go into the meeting with one voting, and we may come out with two. So we may, that may be required. So that's why it says with the S's, because that is in flux and unlikely to change. So just, just so we know what that, why that was worded that way, and why it is the amount it was. And/or you also don't know until too late if the other person needs to go. So in that particular case, that's why it's worded that way, versus the trustee mentor where they just take over the other person's spot, so. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers. Oh, you're, you're on there? There you go. Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you. And I, through you, Chair, to trustee Oliver, thank you for that suggestion. So I've added it to our future agenda items for our Committee of the Whole for consideration in the new year. Thanks.
Thank you. So seeing no further speakers, all those in favor. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So we're now up to the Audit Committee 2015-2016 Annual Report. Trustee Gray, report 16169 on page 18 of your board package. Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. The Audit Committee met on November 8, 2016. The purpose of the meeting was to review the, purpose of the meeting included a review of the 2015-16 annual reports to the Board of Trustees and to the ministry. In each case, the annual reports contain the information prescribed under Ontario Regulation 361/10. And so the motion stays, sits before you.
Thank you. I'll put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved, the Board of Trustees accept the 2015-16 Audit Committee Annual Report to the Board of Trustees and 2015-16 Annual Report to the Ministry. Moved by trustee Gray, seconded by trustee Harvey Hope. Is there any comments or questions on this motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So our next item is the 2015-16 Financial Statements and Accumulated Surplus Balances. Superintendent Veerman, report 16159 on page 19 of your board package. Welcome, Superintendent Veerman.
Thank you, through the Chair. The report was presented at the last meeting, and at this point, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. So I'm going to put the motion on the floor. I asked that they be split, please. Okay. I'll put the first motion on the floor. Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board authorized the 2015-16 year-end surplus to be transferred to the accumulated surplus categories, amounts internally restricted for future use by the board, year-end roll-forwards, $717,816 for year-end roll-forwards, student achievement, $100,000 special education program review, $350,000 program viability implementation, $100,000 accommodation review, $213,805 staff training, and $3,543,796 for the 2016-2017 budget, budget compliance. Accommodation is $11,100,000 future administrative building. Moved by trustee Harvey Hope, seconded by trustee Gray. Any discussion on the first motion? Trustee L Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Thank you again for this report. I was just wondering whether you could provide some additional detail regarding the budget compliance line, and, and perhaps give a couple of examples of what is contained therein. Thank you.
Thank you, through the Chair. The trustees will recall during budget discussion, there were a lot of difficult decisions that were made. And as a result of our projected surplus at that time, so when we were discussing the budget, we did anticipate that at year-end, we would be in a surplus position. And at that time, in order to minimize future cuts, the recommendation was put forward, and trustees approved, that we allocate the amount $3.5 million from the projected surplus in order to balance the budget.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. I just wanted to bring to public's attention that we did discuss the, this particular motion at our Committee of the Whole meeting, and so we did have an opportunity to discuss, to discuss this more fully. And there were no further issues that arose during that Finance and Accountability Subcommittee. Thank you.
And seeing no further speakers? Do we have, did you put it in so it can be broken down? The same? Okay. Okay, so all those in favor of the first motion? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. So I'll put the second motion on the floor. Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board approve the audited financial statements for the financial year ended August 31st, 2016. Moved by trustee Collard, seconded by trustee Harvey Hope. Is there any discussion on this motion? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Again, no particular questions, but I just wanted to relay our, the Board of Trustees appreciation to the Superintendent of Business and Oliver Staff for all of the work that's involved in getting this done. This is not an easy job. This is not an easy job, and we give, there, between the ministry guidelines, deadlines and the Board of Trustees deadlines, it, the turnaround is incredibly fast, so we appreciate all of the work you guys put in on this. So, and I support the motion.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers? All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much Superintendent Veerman, and thank you to you and everyone involved in pulling this all together, because as trustee Harvey Hope said, it is a big report, and we do appreciate you bringing it to us. So our next item is communication to the board, and we have our student trustee reports. So trustees Metropolansky and Hajali, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So since the last board meeting, the first thing that we did was we attended the Osta Eko Conference, the first conference of the year, which is the fall general meeting. It was a great conference, we had a really great time. One of the best parts was sharing with other student trustees what they're doing at their boards, what's going on there, in terms of one thing we're learning about and we hope to get from other boards. We're talking to other student trustees about how they vote in and how they elect student trustees in their boards, and we hope to take some ideas from other boards. In terms of boards who have learned from us, at our last Student Senate meeting, which we'll talk about in a second, we actually had the Hamilton Wentworth District School Board come to watch our Student Senate, because we're, we're one of the very few boards who has an elementary senate, they're very interested in that, and they, I've been in touch with the student trustees from that board, and they recently had their first elementary Student Senate meeting, and they had a huge turnout, and they modeled it after ours, so it was great to just see that, that they're learning from this board and from other student trustees. Yeah.
Uh, so as Dr. said, are, we had our second Student Senate meeting about two weeks ago, and we mainly focused throughout the meeting about different educational issues affecting students and their schools. We noticed that a lot of the elementary students kind of brought up issues that weren't really impacting the board level essentially, so they were bringing up things like wanting Gay Straight Alliance or LGBTQ clubs, so more focus on inclusivity. So we explained to them the distinction between things they can change in their schools as well as bring to the board level. And our next Student Senate meeting is on Tuesday, the 13th, but we'll be continuing having all these educational issues.
Yeah, and then just one more thing to add to the second student, to their last Student Senate meeting, some of the students, especially in secondary, discussed a lot of bus, busing issues in their community. They wanted us to bring them to the board, so the, the ones in particular, we actually had students from ACT income, which was really good, because they haven't been able to come before. That's a new area of representation for us, but they mentioned that busing doesn't come very frequently within their community, and students from Blake Lock, which is very, which is close to where I'm, where my school is, it's my home school, so I've also heard from students in my community that that's a problem that they're experiencing, they just said that they're, they're having some issues with busing there.
Associate Director Vogue.
Yeah, thanks, student trustees, for raising that issue. We continue to struggle a little bit with busing there. We think things have gotten better since the beginning of the school year, but there are still some, some areas that we're working with transportation, so if there's any specifics that you're hearing from students, please feel free to pass those on, and we can look at specific routes and really try to narrow in on where the issues are. We do hear from the odd parent where we're still experiencing specific root issues, and we continue to work on that.
Director Miller.
Thank you. Through you Chair Amos, to student trustees, and for all trustees, they talked, trustee Metropolansky mentioned about looking at student trustee elections. Manager Gale, Gortmaker and I are also looking at that, we will be working with trustees Metropolansky and Hajali to look at how we can fix that, because we did have some issues last time around. But they weren't that bad, because look what we got, so. So we will continue to look at that, and we'll work with you guys.
Thank you. Comments and questions for student trustee, trustee Danieli?
Uh, thank you very much. I would like to comment on the fact that your presentation of a video with OPSPA was a topic of conversation last week, not only at the OPSPA Executive Meeting, but at the OPSPA Board of Directors as well, to the point where the OPSPA President Lori French and I both concur that when we want, when we grow up, we want to be Dasha Metropolansky. Apparently you knocked it out of the park, and on a provincial level, they were incredibly impressed with you, so thank you very much for doing that.
Start then. That's wonderful news. We'll all have to see this video.
Uh, so there's actually, the HDSP, I contacted Marnie about it, but the Toronto Star interviewed me about accessibility, because the premier heard about a lot of different groups are pushing for accessibility changes. So after this video came out, after we did our launch, and there's some other groups pushing for it as well, this article came out in the Toronto Star, the premier decided to put in a plan or a committee that's going to focus on accessibility within schools, within the province. But there's, and you can find it on the HDSP Twitter, but in the article, there's a link to the video itself. The video is basically showcasing lots of different initiatives at different school boards to make schools more accessible. We're focusing on a normative shift, so the Ministry of Accessibility is doing a lot in terms of providing physical infrastructure, so making more accessible schools, having wheelchair accessible parking spaces, but there's also a normative shift that's needed in terms of students and staff recognizing that sometimes these disabilities are invisible, you can only get to know them by speaking with someone, getting to know them, and it, having more accessible classrooms and learning environments is something that affects every one of us, even if you don't directly interact with those challenges yourself. So by having a video about that and launching that video in partnership with OPSPA, it was a step, we think, towards making that a more prominent issue and making it more public.
That's amazing. So we'll all have to go look for this link, so, thank you. And thank you for obviously being a model that other boards want to copy, so I mean, that's kind of exciting too, so.
Heck, other boards, I want to copy.
We're not going there. Remember she, she could, she's only in grade 11. Seeing no further comments or questions, thank you very much for your report tonight. Sounds like some great things are happening, and your next meeting is January the?
13th.
The 13th? Oh, next week? December the, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we're up to information items. Are there any notices of motion tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to our action items for January 11th. The first is the motion to rescind M110213 and M110216. Trustee Collard, report 16184 on page 61 of your board package. Would you like to speak to this trustee Collard?
Yes, please. As you know, we, the Director created a critical path document that incorporates both of these motions from the previous term, making the motions themselves redundant, and this is why I have brought forward the motion to rescind, and it will appear on our next agenda package for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on this? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Um, I appreciate the admin procedure being highlighted in the report. I'm wondering, Mr. Director, whether or not that particular admin procedure could be highlighted somehow so that it doesn't just one of a crowd, so that when people are trying to figure out what the board planning thing is or whatever, that somehow we, it's, it's a little easier to find that. I mean, last, two weeks ago, we talked about the name of it being kind of strange, but it, I'm wondering whether or not that's part of that whole, not just alphabetical admin procedures, but actually maybe grouping things in a different way so people can find stuff.
Thank you, Director Miller. Associate Director Vogue.
Uh, thanks for that question trustee Anne Harvey Hope. We, trustee Harvey Hope, we are currently actually looking at that, and not just because of that admin procedure, which I, I agree with, the name that came forward was, I think we've made the fix on that one, but we are looking at having the admin procedures be searchable, and manager Gortmaker is working on that, as well as actually grouping them for people that want to actually visually find them on the website, so they will be in groupings, and I'm just thinking about our groupings, I think we had human resources related things, finance, accommodation, student services, some of those general areas so that then you can find things within those groups, but manager Gortmaker is also having search tags on them so that you can punch in keywords and things like that as well. So hopefully that'll be up and running this year, early in the new year.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Uh, thank you. I, just something I've been thinking about, I haven't quite been able to rationalize yet, is assuming this goes forward, so we would be rescinding a motion on the assumption, with the understanding that it's, it's in the procedure the way, the way the intent of those motions were, I think my concern would be at some point in the future, admin procedures might change, and so how, how do we handle that? That, that it was a board motion kind of to have those in that order, and I'm just worried that we've, we might lose the check and balances somehow. So I, I think, I don't know if that affects anything tonight, but I just wanted to flag it for consideration in, in, in part of those, not as part of the decision, but just in, in how we handle that type of thing in admin procedures moving forward.
Director Miller.
Through you Chair Amos, to Vice Chair Graves, that's an excellent point, because it was board motion around the other parts. I, I don't think we have a concern this year at all, we don't have a concern at all this year, but you're right, things can change. Let us do some thinking about that, and we'll come back to the board with a recommendation around how to address that.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
I know you said you're going to go off and think, but I have, I have a potential solution for you, and you can add it to your list of thoughts. One of the things that is outstanding that the policy bylaw and government governance, as well as and/or the Finance and Accountability Subcommittee, one of the other, will, will need to address is the Director's Limitations Bylaws that are seriously out of date, and one of the things that could easily be put into the new set of Director's requirements or the governance policy that should be there would be the Director shall, dot, 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 and then put that wording that was in, you know, shall follow the, this procedure or shall whatever, or if there's going to be something out of the ordinary, shall bring it to the attention of, as in still leave some latitude, but would definitely need to ask the board to change that piece before they could change the admin procedure that it was hanging on, so I think there are some ways easily, because that was the intent of a framework policy or a governance policy was the admin procedure would hang on it, so.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers, this will come back on January the 11th. Thank you. Our next item is Banking Resolutions. Superintendent Veerman, report 16180 on page 62 of your board package. Welcome Superintendent Veerman.
Thank you. Through the Chair, as part of the inaugural meeting, we do bring forward the banking resolutions for the following year. The banking resolutions deal with the authority to sign, the general expenditures, the education development charge expenditures, and facsimile signature on the checks, and the details with respect to each of those are found in the appendices. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. I believe we usually waive the rules for this motion because of, generally with the Chair and Vice Chair elections, it's relevant, but this time around, it hasn't changed, so we can either waive the rules and deal with it tonight, and then it's, okay, so can I have a motion to waive the rules? Trustee Gaben, seconded by trustee Reynolds. Is there any discussion on waiving the rules? Trustee Harvey Hope, did you want, sorry, do you want to speak? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to know why this motion is coming when it does, and why it isn't for action tonight. We've had this conversation for approximately four to five years. It needs to come for action the night we have this. Now this time, yes, we don't need it, and yes, we can waive the rules, and yes, we would all agree we need to waive the rules, but there's absolutely no reason why it shouldn't have been on last two weeks ago's, three weeks ago's board meeting package, because it is a generic report. It's a blank for the Chair, so there is no reason why it couldn't be there unless for some reason in the last three weeks, we're going to change how much money we're going to borrow, and I don't think Superintendent Veerman cuts it that fine, so I think we're good. I think we should, so could we put it in the board package for board reports that it is going to hit sometime in November for action at the, this night?
I, I see Superintendent Veerman nodding her head that she will take note of that.
Okay. I nodded my head too. Through you Chair Amos, to trustee Harvey Hope, we will indeed do that.
I have no objection to waiving the rules, although I'm not even sure it matters because it doesn't need, there's nothing changed and there's no change, signs, things to sign.
But we'll just deal with it tonight, so. Okay, so all those in favor of waiving the rules? And there's two people missing, and that's. So that passes unanimously. So I'm going to read the motion. Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board approved the banking resolution, authority to sign Appendix 1, Banking Resolution, Current Expenditures, Appendix 2, Banking Resolution, Education Development Charges, Appendix 3, and Banking Resolution, Facsimile Signatures Unchecked, Appendix 4. Moved by trustee Reynolds, seconded by trustee Oliver. Is there any discussion on the motion? Trustee Harvey Hope.
So in the interest of education tonight, through you Madam Chair, to Superintendent Veerman, is there a reason why there's no dates on these? Like, should it not be a date somewhere on this page, or does it just get, I mean, is it a bylaw that we basically, or bylaw number 201701 or something? I mean, I'm curious why there, you wouldn't be able to tell the, this year's version versus last year's version as far as I can tell, except if the Chair changed.
Through the Chair, if I could ask trustee Harvey Hope just additional clarification with respect to the comment on the, on the dates? I'm just unclear as to.
In the appendixes, there's no date anywhere. There's no date underneath the Chair's name, there's no date at the top that says this is the appendix for this year, there's no date. So this year's Appendix A will look exactly like last year's Appendix A, and nobody will know which year they signed what.
Through you Chair Amos, to trustee Harvey Hope, we will add a date to the signature where this, where it's signed. Just, it's a pretty simple fix, we just put date beside it.
Thank you. And seeing no further questions? And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much Superintendent Veerman. So our next items are information items. The first item is Facilities, Projects, Operations, and Maintenance. Superintendent Cullen, report 16183 on page 68 of your board package. Welcome Superintendent Cullen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight you have a report that is our best attempt at this point in the year to give trustees and the public an indication of the work that we have scheduled to take place this year. You may recall that we received a few extra sources of funding related to facilities this year. One announced in late June, the other, our own closed the gap, and there were actually increases to both the renewal and the school condition funding sources, so it is turning out to be a extremely large year as far, as far as volume of work goes. What that has led to in, in our department as far as preparation goes is we've tried to accelerate the preparation process by at least a couple of months, so this would typically have come to the board in maybe January or as late as February, and we've been able to include a couple of other areas of the budget, which are the family of schools dollars that schools get to prioritize locally, smaller dollar value, local type issues. We have not done that yet, the schools are. local type issues. We have not done that yet. The schools are still in that process, and those smaller items will be blended into this list as they get complete. And there's also the program area. So our program staff look at things like a science lab, or things of that nature, that they would then also add to the list. The reason we've had to accelerate the timeline is because of the volume of projects and the fact that multiple projects are occurring at the same site. And that presents some issues around coordination on the site. If you've got multiple trades, there are potential for conflict on the site, so those multiple trades need to be coordinated through one general contractor. You'll notice on the table of information, there's a column called BP, or BP1. It's a bundled project is what the terminology is we're using. So if there are multiple things occurring at one school, they may be designated to become part of the bundled project. If there's no BP number beside it, at this point, it would be our expectation that that would probably still occur as a freestanding independent project, may in fact happen over either Christmas or March break, to get it done out of the way so that it doesn't conflict with the other work that would be going on under the bundled one. Most of this work, as you may recall, gets prioritized through our renewal process, an ongoing open spreadsheet by way of the web that the schools can access, submit their projects for consideration, and then the facility staff and representatives from both elementary and secondary sit down and review them, and create the final list based on a number of criteria that we've shared in the past around the weighting factors that relate to the needs of the buildings. We're presenting at this point in time because we believe this is the big part of the work. There will be pieces added to it, as I said earlier, and there may in fact be some deletions. We could, as we start to look at the magnitude and scope on a given site, determine that it might be a two-year project. In some cases, we're in excess of a million dollars at some of the school sites right now, and that may cause the necessity to spread it over the course of two years. We're going to be talking to many of the schools about early access during the May-June window to get prepped and ready on-site, and we may in fact not complete by September, depending on the actual nature of the work. But that will all become part of the specific communication plan for each of the school sites, as the project leads take those forward. I think that's, in a nutshell, what our plan is at this point in time. We've been talking to our purchasing department on almost a daily basis, because this process will begin with the selection of the consultants to do the design work, potentially architects. It could be limited to some of the specific trades, like electrical consultants or mechanical consultants. But that whole team of consultant work to prepare the documents, look at the detailed technical information, will then lead to the tendering of the projects through our purchasing department. So there's a fairly significant workload coming their direction as well at some point in this process. So we're working to try and spread the work out over both time and, and distance as much as we can, given the staff resources that are available at this point in time. We've also assigned the projects to many of our field supervisors that deal with the maintenance items in schools. Will be actually stepping up to start to do some of the more capital-oriented projects. So the team of capital staff that typically deal with new schools and additions are well-versed in the management of a project of that style, and the other staff will now be doing some of those similar projects, but on a slightly smaller level. So it's been a, a real challenge to try and distribute the workload, given the volume that's here. I would anticipate that this is probably three times, if not more, the volume of work that we've seen in any prior summer series of work. So that's why the early and partial list at this point in time. Have you taken any questions to either the process or the items that are currently on the list? Thank you.
And apparently, there's a list. Comments and questions on this topic. Trustee Gabens.
Thank you, Chair Amos. I commend you on the amount of work that you guys are going to undertake. I was looking through the list, and of course, I wasn't surprised to see, you know, this center needs a lot of work in some of our older facilities, but I was surprised to see schools like John Voight and Alton Village to have something called controls replacement done. And I was just wondering, what is that?
Actually, you raised two things there. I'm going to take the advantage to make one point. There are a number of things in here identified as JW Singleton Center that aren't really for this building. So we've actually, since the production of this list, changed the terminology. Those are central accounts that are handled by our regional staff. So for instance, Nick Mandig would be dealing with the Emerald Ashbor issue, or the Georgian Wire glass. So there's a number of those things that are put into a central regional account for them to address, but we labeled them as JW Singleton, and we realized that would be a little bit misleading if somebody were to sum total them and come up with a number of things for the Singleton Center. We'd have our new board office, but that's, that was really not the case. So we've since revised the terminology to reflect that. So I thank you for pointing that out. So if you see various schools, or the nature of the description would, would lead you to believe it's a regional item, in the next version of the list, you'll see that it's actually labeled as various schools or regional list. There are some specific for the building, though, because it is in need of some, some repairs. The sites that are going through, there's a number of them actually going through the controls. So the control situation is, we've had a system in place going back almost 20 years now, as far as the building automation system and, and controls go. During the construction of some of the newer schools, we were in limbo between what we're going to move to. So we were going through the request for proposal and review and evaluation of a new system. That new system has now been selected. There are some that are referred to as a open platform, which means all of the manufacturers have the ability to input and, and communicate and talk to one another. That's the direction that we are heading in. So some of the schools that are on the list, maybe the newer ones, because they might have got one of the optional systems or an interim system in there. And of course, the newer ones are the more complex, and the ones that we have the, I'll say more control points in than some of the older schools that would have, have fewer in them. So there are a number of sites on the controls transition list that could be as recent as some of our new schools because of that switch from the one platform to the other. I would suggest that the ones that are the newer ones will likely be done last. They're operating, they're working in that regard, but we'd still want to eventually get them all over to the same platform so they can all communicate back centrally.
Thank you. Trustee Al Harrison.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Wow, this is a lot of work that's anticipated. That's, that's great. I have a few questions. The first one is, you have mentioned updated reports, and I just wondered when you anticipate that the lists will be updated and provided back to the group? Secondly, given the increased amount of work being done, and the number of contractors that are likely going to be necessitated to, to do that work, what checks and balances are in place to, I guess, ensure that the upgrades are done to the highest standards? And is there any implications for prices in the marketplace, given this volume of work, not only at this school board, but others? And then lastly, I was wondering, with this spending, can you quantify our outstanding backlog of repairs and enhancements that are still remaining?
Thank you for that. Through the chair to trustee Al Harrison. There's a couple of pieces there. The list updates will probably be done electronically as opposed to a presentation in this format. So because it is an Excel spreadsheet, we'll simply be able to post it and share it. We've recently shared it with our staff. It would be our next step in the process to share it with the schools, and give them a sense of, of what the, the game plan is at this point in time. We would also be able to do that with the trustees. So I would anticipate any future updates are more likely going to be in the format of posting or sharing of a public document that everybody would have access to review and look at. It is in Excel. It can be sorted in a variety of different ways because of that. So if you're looking at a specific school, or just your group of schools, that's, that's one way, or for a type of project, for instance. So some of our staff will want to look at it from the perspective of where are all the lighting retrofit projects and do that. So it would be an active document for everybody to look at. So that would be my proposed update. It would also include, at some point, as I said earlier, the family of schools projects. So as you know, schools get, it's a limited amount of dollars. It works out to about $500,000 across the system, that the schools themselves will designate to things like carpet or painting, more in the cosmetic area than, than actual renewal. But they certainly do a lot to enhance the school. So those will be added to the list as they come forward in that fashion. Contractor quality control. We're currently working with a list of vendors that both purchasing and ourselves have been through and vetted. Our concern was, early in the process, would we have enough? Do we have the depth in the list to handle the volume that's here? We've been reviewing that, as I said, meeting with purchasing on a regular basis to look at, at a whole variety of issues around the processes. But that has been one of the conversations that we've had, as well as the evaluation of the contractors. So in addition to hopefully going in with a good list of quality providers, we're also saying that there's a mechanism that we have in place on the capital projects to report back on, are they in fact performing as well as they should be? And that's one of the things that, that we're going to be, I think, extending into the smaller project. We've always done it on the bigger ones. These are now becoming similar in the process, maybe not in the volume of work, but similar in process to the larger ones. We're going to be adding in some of those steps into those smaller projects. One of the things we're going to be doing with our own staff is actually inservicing and training them on some of the things that they can be doing in those project areas, and be our capital team taking them through that exercise. I think the next part was really to, how do we ensure that we're going to continue to get quality when we go into this? You're absolutely correct when we talk about the volume of work that's about to hit not just Halton, but I would suspect all the school boards across the province. We did see a bit of a jump in pricing last year in a couple of very specific trade areas, because the ministry had released dollars specific in those areas. They didn't do that to the same degree this time. So this, this created a little bit of variety, so that boards have more flexibility, and not all the boards, all at the same time, all went looking for the same types of trades. And that was, I think, a bit of a, a learning curve on, on that particular cycle. So hopefully that doesn't happen, and because we're starting as early as we are, we think we'll still be leading the timing element and get the contractors locked up as soon as we can. We have an issue in Halton with the, I'll say, the busy state of construction in the residential market. In a lot of areas, they don't have the same activity level as we do. So we have found ourselves, over the past several years, competing with contractors in those areas, and we'll continue to do that as we go forward. We recognize that that's just part of the reality of currently being in this economy in this location. We will be competing to some degree with the very busy residential market that's going on in, in the Halton area. Pricing, there'll be an impact. I don't think there's any doubt. There's going to be a slight increase to the market because of the lack of availability of either material or, or labor, but we also have the ability to stretch this out a little bit. So if it gets too extreme, we would put off some of the projects until next year, and, and spread that workload out, which would help do that. Backlog, I don't think I can answer the backlog question at the moment, but we are tracking that. This is a big injection into the system. So I would hope that it certainly is big enough that it will have an impact on the backlog of maintenance in the schools. But as you know, we track that each year, and look at the dollars that go in. I would say that this year individually would exceed the amount that we would typically say we need in a given year. So there's certainly not going to be any backlog created by this year. Hopefully we're advancing and making some ground on the backlog, but I couldn't answer the question at the moment of what that backlog would be right at this point in time.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Through Chair Amos, to Superintendent of Facility Services Cullen. Thank you for your report. My question actually touches on trustee Al Harrison's comment about the backlog. What I was concerned about were, are there any schools that are continually on the backlog, meaning they submit requests that don't make it, you know, that are continually pushed down the list, that are not on it? Because not all schools are represented here. So I would think that a school sort of, that is looking at this, they're kind of wondering, where am I? Or are there any schools that are not on the list, that are waiting in, in the backlog?
Through the chair to trustee Reynolds. This year, we're probably going to hit most of the schools in some way, because of the dollar volume that's available for us. I think I heard the number of 66 sites out of 100. So that's a fairly significant number of the current school sites that we have to, to address. As far as schools that would have issues that are constantly on the backlog list or not addressed, I would say there are projects that have been on the list for a long time, but that would imply to me that they're not priority projects. So the nature of the request may be such that it's not detrimental to the health and safety of the building, the, the integrity or infrastructure of the building, or of the program delivery. It might fall into that category, but nice to have. It may also fall into the category of either so complex or so large that it's, you know, hasn't been possible, given the, the previous funding levels, and, and there's an equity issue there to be considered. So I would say, yes, there are projects that have been on the list that don't get approved, but I don't think it would be too surprising if somebody look at the nature of that particular request, why it didn't make the, the priority listing. The priority setting process seems to address most of those kinds of issues, I suspect, in, in regard to what should be done and can be done, given the funding in any particular year. But as I think was alluded to earlier, there has been a backlog. So when we do report on how many dollars we should be spending each year, we're coming up a little bit short, so not everything will get approved. So there is, there's been a building of the backlog, if you will, over the years.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Thank you. Through the chair to Superintendent Cullen. First of all, like my trustees have already expressed, thank you so much for this. It represents a tremendous amount of work, and up in the hills, I think there's going to be a lot of principals very, very pleased to see the number of projects that will be supported, if not this year, stepping off into the next year, as the volume would suggest. Just wondering, in any of these projects, if a school had other projects outlined that they thought was more important that those, than those that were chosen, do they have any recourse to have further discussions? Like, I guess there may be a principal out there that might think that maybe the replacement of a gymnasium wall was not as important as the air conditioning, and they would rather see something flipped in importance, and maybe given recognition. So that's question number one. And question number two is, how aware are the principals of this list in terms of this year, and what kind of arrangements have already been started with the principals?
Thank you for both of those questions. The appeal process is not an informal one. We don't invite them, but we have had them, obviously, from time to time. And we can also have occasions when something comes up that wasn't known at the time that the list was prioritized. So because we keep the list open all year, and the purpose of that is that you can submit things as they come up. You don't have to remember them or note them. You can just literally submit them, and they're then kind of locked in place and address them. We start the review in, this year, we started actually in September. And, but that's not to say that something couldn't have, couldn't have come up last week, literally. So there's, there's always the opportunity to shift things in and out. I'm not too aware of, of many opportunity, or many occurrences where it's been by request. It's been more by necessity. So if, if a roof section were to fail, or a wall showed signs of a structural flaw, clearly those would jump up, and something else may have to fall off the list to, to allow for the funding. But yes, certainly principal, and as far as information and awareness goes, we are sharing it here tonight. It's in the board public package. We're going to be putting that release out to schools tomorrow, that this is the list as we have it. And as I said, we'll probably tweak some of the wording in it to clarify things like the regional JW Singleton, those types of things. And then, of course, note that the facility, the family of schools ones will be added in the future as they prioritize those. So awareness-wise, I would say the system is probably going to be aware almost immediately. We kind of like to bring things here first, but the board package is public, so it's out, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Trustee, Vice Chair Graves. Through you Chair to Superintendent Cullen. First, thank you. There's a number of projects on there that I recognize that I know in my community. But Craig Kilbarger is going to be very pleased to see there. My question goes back to trustee Gabens's question about the controls replacement. Just looking at the, the dollar figure, it doesn't look like a small job. So I was wondering, what, if any, impact would there be on the operation of the school while that was being done, or is that something that's done over the summer? And the reason why I ask, because just the number of schools that are within my wards that will be going through that, it'd be good to be able to, to handle any questions or concerns if they arise from the public.
Thank you for that. So for the first question, probably no interruption of operation. So the control systems that we're talking about are really the ones that give us the ability to communicate with the school remotely, or have the school sort of talk to itself. There are a series of controls that actually operate each freestanding piece of equipment that you don't generally have to interrupt or do too much to. It's going to continue to operate that system, but you may not have the ability to talk to it remotely. So from the standpoint of the school, if it had to be operating locally, it could be set in that mode while other things are occurring. We may lose the ability to communicate with the school. That doesn't mean the system won't operate. So I would say the disruptions should be minimal, and in many cases, when you see the dollar figure attached here, it's been done on the basis that we have an idea of what it might be for a size, a school of a certain size with certain equipment. But the projects are somewhat fluid in that if one was a smaller, one was a larger, those dollars are going to be able to move around. We've got one individual doing most of the control-related ones, and you look at the bundled projects, some of the controls are actually bundled in a series of schools to give that flexibility to potentially shift from a larger to a smaller school based on both budget, timing, and access. So I, I think the controls issue in my mind will probably be minimal disruption in the schools, but because of the size of it, it's one of the ones that we anticipate will probably be done over the course of the two years. But because of the size of it, it's one of the ones that we anticipate will probably be done over the course of the two years.
Thank you. And I believe that exhausts our list of questions and comments. So thank you very much, Superintendent Colin. It's wonderful to see so much work is going to be happening at our schools. And I know that having that much going on in the system will make quite a few people in schools happy. So thank you very much. Our next item is the Capital Report Financial Summary. Superintendent Beerman, report 16179 on page 81 of your board package. Welcome back, Superintendent Beerman.
Thank you. Through the chair, this summarizes the ongoing projects and the financial expenditures with respect to those projects. This report is typically included as part of the facilities update that Superintendent Colin prepares. But because of the timing of year-end, it didn't coincide with that presentation. And as a result, we have included it as a separate report this evening. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Are there any comments or questions for Superintendent Beerman on the Capital Financial Summary? Trustee, have you hope?
Thank you. So I guess that answers, sort of answers my first question of Appendix A is missing. But I believe it's because Appendix A would have been Superintendent Cullen's piece that we saw earlier. And so we're getting B, C, and D. I might suggest that, and I've asked this before, but perhaps we could have on this front page of the report, you know, the previous one or where it's going and maybe a list of the appendices. So we actually understand what's attached to the report. But my query was on the case of Udenawi has a projected variance quite substantial. And I was curious whether or not that was one of those ones where, due to the design of the school or how we did things, whether or not there was a reason why it was so much under the benchmark budget, I guess. It just seems a little high, although it isn't, and it is 100% complete. It's on, it's in the Appendix B, the summary, the first page of it.
Yeah, without having the opportunity to go through and do the nickels and dimes version of the review, Udenawi is a particularly, I think, good project in regard to our costs related to the ministry benchmark. You may recall that the way in which we built Udenawi was extremely different than anything else we've ever done. We literally moved in and started construction as the developer cleared the soil. So we basically didn't know what's called construction management. So we had a team that basically acted as the general contractor doing that. So the budgets were probably struck at that time to be generous or protected in that we didn't want to go over budget. And that's why there'd probably be a slightly larger variance at the end than a typical project.
Thank you. Can I follow up?
Go ahead.
My other question is to Superintendent Beerman. The ones that are actually finished as of August 31st, would one be able to tie a number from this report into the additions in the financial statement capital spreadsheet? Like the tangible capital assets thing? Would actually see an addition number that would tie into these capital reports?
Through the chair, in the summary on the financial statements, it would include the projects completed during the year. We can typically record the projects up to the 95% completion. So again, depending on the timing of when that 95% is complete with respect to the financial statements, the details that go into the financial statements, it may be difficult to tie it in, but certainly that information could be provided.
Thank you. And seeing no further questions, thank you very much for your report tonight. Our next item is the Primary Core French. Superintendent Salmini, report 16178 on page 92 of your board package. Welcome, Superintendent Salmini.
Thank you and good evening. This report addresses the possibility of adding additional minutes of instruction to the Primary Core French program. As you know, presently, Primary Core French is in its third year of implementation. And the remainder of our elementary schools will begin to implement the program in grade one in the 2017-18 school year. Currently, we have a program that is a Halton District School Board-developed program for primary based on the Ontario French as a second language curriculum for grades four to eight. And the recommendation in the report is for us to continue with the current implementation plan and to leave the minutes of instruction in primary at 40 minutes. We think it's important for us to complete full implementation and to have an opportunity to fully assess the impact of the program before making any changes. There are further rationale is in the written report, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions that trustees may have.
Are there any comments or questions on the Primary Core French report tonight? Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for this report. My question is whether there are still any opportunities, I guess, maybe in the spirit of innovation or across subject matter learning, that teachers could incorporate things like French songs or counting in math class and so on to kind of continue to foster that language acquisition.
So through the chair to Trustee L. Harrison. Some of the difficulty with that would be that not all of our teachers that are teaching English program would have French qualifications or French training or any French language. So to be able to deliver other parts of the program in French would be challenging for some of our teaching staff.
Thank you. Trustee, have you hope?
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I am commenting on the summary reasons. I think the, I agree, and the overarching thought here is I agree not to change it at the moment because of the third reason. The school programs has a lot on their plate, et cetera. I don't actually agree with the first two. The increase in Primary Core French would reduce instructional minutes. Again, drama, dance, music, the French teacher could be picking up some pieces. I know what you just said to Trustee L. Harrison, but I also have seen a school that is 100% English teach French to the entire school in music. And most of us, having gone through the system, know enough of French to teach a kindergarten class or a grade one class a little bit of song. So I think there is, there might be a consistency issue, but I think one could maybe look at the possibility of doing it. But I understand why you're not doing it now. And also, the increase in the core French resulting in less in the junior grades, not necessarily. That would be a decision. I mean, there's no reason why we can't go above the minutes that we are required to have. So again, it was just a logic issue there as far as, yes, it would jiggle the minutes, but it wouldn't have to. So, but I agree overall that right now, we're putting an awful lot of stress on our program department. And we also do not have Assistant Principal French. So we're also short one person as far as implementing all of this. So I agree that the idea, the status quo makes some sense. I would, I'm looking forward to seeing when we get this fully implemented because a lot of our data collection, et cetera, are, as far as the uptake, is going to be affected once everybody knows they can get Primary Core French. And right now, it's, well, this school has it, that school doesn't. Once everybody has Primary Core French and we sort of communicate that better because there aren't some that don't have it already, we have not been as vocal about explaining it as in not to make it obvious which ones still can't get it. I think maybe that'll make a difference. Because I think it's when things are still in a pilot mode, people don't necessarily jump in. And I think we'll see more of an effect once it's fully implemented.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through your chair to Superintendent Salmini. Thank you very much for the report. I'm very grateful that our school board offers Core French in grade one. I think that's terrific. And I appreciate the logistics, as you've outlined them in the report, and the reasons for why we cannot increase the time. But I, so that's, I totally appreciate that. I know in the past, we had some discussions around other opportunities, whether it be kind of like a lunchtime French club or some after-school activities. So I'm hoping that we can still keep that on the radar, that if there are groups or organizations that are willing to partner up with us and support teachers or, you know, provide those sorts of activities, that we are open to that. So thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair to Trustee Oliver. I think that's something that we can also, with our French instructional program leaders, talk about. You know, what kinds of opportunities might they be encouraging our FSL staff to do as those extracurriculars? Because we do have, you know, we do have strength in the people that we have in our schools.
Thank you. Trustee Gravence.
Thank you, Chair Amos. Thank you very much for this report. My concern lies actually in the junior grades. And I just, because of that, spreading the minutes out through to primary, are we giving enough instruction, starting in grade four, where we're starting to learn to write? And of course, conjugate those verbs and all that stuff we all love to do. Are we giving the kids enough to be able to succeed heading into high school with that lowered amount of actual written French instruction?
Through the chair to Trustee Gravence. I think initially, when the Primary Core French program was initiated, that the idea was that we weren't going to increase the overall number of instructional minutes for elementary students in Core French. And so that's why, you know, the minutes were pulled down. We don't have the reduced number yet in the junior grades. So after the full implementation, it'll be next year, actually, that our first group of students that started in grade one will be in grade four and will be launching the reduced number of minutes. So at this time, I don't really have an answer. I think we'll have to collect that data once we see that first group of students get to junior and experience the program at the reduced number of minutes.
Director Miller.
And through your chair, Amos to Trustee Gravence. And I think that there's a belief, we'll find out once we start gathering the data, that the kids that go into grade four will have a better grounding in the French to begin with. And they can get to some of those written parts because they'll have had it for three years prior to getting to grade four, they're not starting fresh. However, having said that, we don't know that, we believe that. But we'll track it to see if that's indeed the case, so.
Thank you. Trustee, have you hope?
Just as a side note to Trustee Gravence, I actually think you will see that happen because they will have an oral basis. You won't be teaching them French from scratch as well as trying to teach them the written at the same time. It will be similar to English-lander school boards in Montreal where we had French going through grade one, two, three, and then you start getting into the stuff in grade four. So you will find that, I know we haven't seen it yet because we haven't done it. But you will find that, having had a familiarity with it, the speed at which the teachers can get through, they won't have to spend as much time on the basics. You will, they will, that, they're still getting quite a lot of French. And I think you'll find that that will be seen.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers, thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
The next item is Board Report Update. Director Miller, report 16181 on page 95 of your board package. Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amos. This is very quick. In your package, we bolded the changes. There's some reports coming on January 11th. One is from the Striking Committee. HLF Fundraising Plan, the Executive Director of HLF will be here to do that. And then there's a few other changes. Some are related to the Spec Ed review in February and so on. So they're all bolded the changes, so. That's okay. Okay, thank you.
Trustee, have you hope, are you on?
Yep.
Okay.
I believe, last time we checked, we were having board meetings on the 11th and the 25th in January. So the ones that say the 18th should be changed to the 25th.
That's a mistake. We found that mistake on Monday, and then we forgot to change it. Sorry about that. All right.
And then, on a similar note, perhaps the capital update could have the dates. So when it says capital update on February 15th, somewhere, either in this version or one getting close, we'd know which quarter, like, could actually say we're aiming for which quarter. That would help me in that I couldn't find the one before and which one I was actually looking for. So just those kinds of things. And also, the PvP placements is on this list, and that doesn't usually come in public. I don't know if we're going to change how we do things, but, but, I mean, I don't.
You're right. No, it's done in private, but we've had it there in the past. That's when it comes to private. And then we, we, but that's when it's coming, so yeah, no, I got your point.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Yes, in reviewing the order paper and comparing it to the report schedule, I found that there are, you know, three or four items that have been around for a few years that are still on the order paper and don't appear to be on the report schedule. And I was wondering if perhaps at our next committee of the whole, we could review the order paper and the report schedule and fill in those gaps. Because our order paper really shouldn't have things as old as they are sitting on it. And it would be nice to tidy that up a little.
Through your chair, Amos, Trustee Collard, I think that's a good idea. There's some, like, there's that huge one on French, and it's coming piecemeal here and there. And that'll still be on until we get everything implemented. But there are others that we can look at for sure, so, yeah.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers on this, thank you very much for your report, Director Miller. Okay, so we're now up to committee reports. Are there, just a minute, let me reset this. Are there any committee reports tonight? But I'll do it last. Trustee Daniele.
Actually, I notice I've just jumped in ahead of Trustee Collard. Trustee Collard, were you going to speak about the OPSA meeting? Are you sure? Okay. Okay, we had a very successful OPSA executive and board of directors meeting last week. A lot of things were discussed. Trying to think of some of the highlights. I'm going to throw it over to Trustee Collard because perhaps she can remember some of the highlights a little more than I can. I don't know why I've just suddenly drawn a blank. I apologize.
Some of the highlights were actually private session items that can't be discussed in public session. The public session portion of the meeting, I already circulated the agenda for that. I did get some handouts that I need to get the staples out of and scan and send out because they do have some last-minute reports that they add in, and I will do so. There was nothing particularly of note in public session. No, it was the private session items, yeah.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Yes, SEAC met last evening. And at the end of the meeting, there was a two-hour session with the gentlemen that are performing the special education review. It was very productive. There was a lot of very open and honest dialogue. And the gentleman seemed particularly impressed with the input of the SEAC members. And I thought it was over well, very well received.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. The Halton Learning Foundation recently met in a board meeting. And I'm very pleased to report that the Benefit Bash was highly successful this year. And many thanks go to everyone that attended here on behalf of senior admin. on behalf of senior admin and all of the trustees. I think the numbers are still being crunched, but it is being reported that they will have broken the $100,000 mark on fundraising on that particular evening. So thanks to everyone again that were, happened to be involved. And some information went out tonight about the winter coat distribution. And thanks to trustees Collard and Gribens and Al Harrison, who were here earlier today on the sorting of the winter coats. They are ready for distribution for those trustees that wish to deliver them personally to their schools. And you can see an email in your in-basket regarding how you can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Pappan.
Thank you. The Accessibility Coordinating Committee met on November the 10th. We're still looking for a SEAC member. We're also working on accessibility in our schools and meeting our target dates. The key strategies for 2016, 2017 are to update the AOD compliance inventory and prioritize the projects. The next accessibility compliance report has to be filed by December the 31st, 2017. And our remaining meetings for this year are January 12th, March 9th, and May 11th.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you. Committee of the whole has met twice since our last board meeting on November 23rd. We had DPR and also did, continued our special education training, talked about our bylaws and our expense policy discussion, which continued at our November 30th meeting. In addition, we had a math presentation and a presentation regarding financial statements and accumulated surplus, which were both excellent. On December 14th, we can look forward to presentations on our schism and co-op offerings, our sectioning, timetabling. And also on there, we have our guiding principles, early discussions, re-trustee budgets. And there are some efficiency items that we need to catch up on from previous meetings, including consent agenda and speaking times. So it's been, there have been some very full agenda meetings.
Thank you. I have an item. The Fix the Finances Committee met earlier today. And we had some good discussion, trying to narrow our focus down. But one of the initiatives that we were looking at is there is a, an item, there's a government initiative called Budget Talks going on right now. And they are looking for submissions that can be funded by the government that will be voted on by the communities. And they will only fund one. There's eight different items, and one of them's in education. So as one of the Fix the Finances initiatives, we thought that maybe we should try and enter one item in to see if we could get support for it. I just sent it out to your emails. But I'm going to ask that we vote on it tonight, whether we want to go forward? Because the deadline for this is December the 11th, so it would have to be submitted before then. And so the actual idea that we were going to submit was, "In the spirit of accountability and transparency, create an action plan that can be used by school boards across the province in order to raise awareness and increase public engagement regarding funding to schools with a view to improving student outcomes." And I don't know if trustee Gribens would like to speak to it. And I know trustee Reynolds has already gone. Trustee Gray, nope. Anyway, so that's, there are, will be other steps that will be coming forward from that committee. But right now, that's the one that we're starting with. So any comments or questions on that? Trustee Collard. Oh, yes, you were there online, as well as trustee Oliver and trustee Al Harrison.
Yes, I just, because of the noise difficulties I was having, I had trouble following the conversation at points. And I'm not clear as to the richness of our submission. Is the submission of that paragraph enough? Or do we have to submit a much broader description of exactly what it is that we would like there? Because it has to be submitted by Sunday.
I believe some of the submissions that I looked at are very basic. It's like, we want one school system. And we want, we want money for mindfulness in schools. So I guess we probably would probably want to give it a little bit of background. But we don't, we were thinking that if this submission went forward, we'd ask them to create the action plan for us, right? So that we could use as a template, and we could be a guinea pig for it, and then use across the system. Trustee Gray.
Yes, hi. I, in today's meeting, I spoke about OPSA being very much a part of this and involved in, with their vision, trying to find strong and equitable education funding. In fact, one of the things in a pamphlet that was distributed earlier tonight was a resolution by OPSA on the pressing problems in funding such as transportation, special education, fully kindergarten, before and after-school programs. And so I would strongly like it on record that we would be working with them as a partner or seeking advice and counsel or, in fact, looking at what's been done from the, across the province. Should we put that, that motion forward? Should we accept it? And should we be awarded the grant to do that study?
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
So I think, two questions. One is regarding the wording. But first, and through your chair, I would hate to put you on the spot. But I'd like to ask Director Miller how he felt about the politics of making a submission such as this? I don't know if that's even appropriate for me to ask. But is this, would we be putting the ministry in an uncomfortable situation by doing this? Like, I'm not seeing any downside to it. But I'd just like to hear the staff perspective.
Through your chair, Amos, and vice chair Graves. I don't think so. I think the way it's being characterized here wouldn't be a big issue in terms of that. There's obviously politics attached to it, right? But I don't, I don't see this as being particularly harmful politically or anything like that, or them having a, yeah, I don't.
So then my follow-up would be, just I'm having difficulty with the last piece matching up with the first part in the first sentence. So, "In the spirit of accountability and transparency, create an action plan that can be used" but da-da. "with a view to improving student outcomes." So I'm just not sure what part that refers to. If that refers to the, is the action plan, does that apply to the action plan? Or is the action plan for improving student outcomes?
The action plan is for raising the awareness and increasing the public engagement regarding the funding of schools. And the ultimate outcome is to improve student outcomes because of the funding. It's missing a piece?
If I may, there's, there's no link between raising awareness of the funding model and student outcomes. There has to be a middle step in there whereby raising awareness of the funding model causes changes to the funding model, which then results in positive student outcomes. Without that middle piece, they're two disparate ideas.
Okay, so what do the other committee members feel about that we're? So, increase public engagement regarding funding to school boards with? Go ahead. Well, it's all right, go ahead.
I would, I would be happy with a motion to, to give permission to the committee to submit a request with this proposal, and then have the committee work out the wording. I'm not sure that's something we could do around the board table this evening. But as long as it's understood that there's a, there's a piece missing there, I'm comfortable. I don't need the exact wording to make a decision on whether or not we should apply.
Okay, so are you making a motion to approve a submission based on?
I wasn't part of the committee. I let one of the committee members make that motion.
Amy? Sorry, trustee Collard. Oh, just a minute, can we have a motion to extend?
I'll make a motion to extend, and then I'll make another suggestion.
Can we have, seconded by trustee Gribens? All those in favor of extension? Okay, so she's not here. And that passes unanimously. Thank you, trustee Collard.
The motion would be to make a submission for this grant based on the idea of raising public awareness of the funding model with a view to having a positive impact on student outcomes in principle. Like, that would be the principle of it. And then we can work on the fine-tuning of it.
Did you happen to capture that, Gail? Trustee Graves.
Thanks. So perhaps someone can clarify for me. So there's, there's two pieces here. There's one, raising public engagement, public awareness. And then two is affecting change to the funding formula or some sort of request for a change in the funding formula. So from what I'm reading, I think this is hopeful that raising awareness will affect the ministry to make a change to the funding formula. And I don't see that as a direct link. So I kind of think they're two separate ideas. Was, it's a question for the committee. Was there a thought to applying directly for the funds to be used to do a review of the current funding model?
That was one of the topics that came up. The submission doesn't mean that we get the grant. That it actually gets voted on by the communities. There are currently 38 submitted under that topic. And they'll be shortlisted by the student representatives to the premier, I believe. And then it'll be voted on by the people in the province. So we were trying to make it non-board specific, but so that we have an action plan so that they, so the government actually helps us create a way of raising awareness around how boards are funded. And that the end result will potentially be, feedback from the community will help change the funding formula and therefore improve student outcome. Is that a good? Director Miller.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I think you're, I think there's too many concepts in there. I think you should leave the student, I understand why you're putting the student outcome in there, and that's ultimately what we want to do. But I think the objective of the, of the grant request by this group is to increase public awareness and engagement of the funding formula and therefore affect a change in the public, in the funding formula. I think by adding the student outcome, it's, it's muddling. Because I would assume that all of these things are, that's their primary objective, is to affect student outcome and improve student needs for student, addressing needs for students. I just think there's, there's too many concepts in there. It's really a two-step process. You want to look at the funding formula, and you want to change as a result of engaging the public in that funding formula. Because inherent in what you're saying there is that we believe that there's something wrong with the funding formula. We've already made that, that's already our belief. But we don't think the public is fully aware of that, right? So you're asking that the public be engaged, that something is done so we can engage the public because we believe the funding formula is flawed. And therefore, by engaging the community, that will affect the change in the funding formula. I think that's kind of what you want to get. It's a two-step thing.
Well, the problem is, the, the projects have to achieve student potential. I think that's why we tried to keep it in there.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. But I, I, I think it makes it awkward. I think it makes it awkward when you have it in there because there's no.
Well, then we'll have to do some word smithing. So we're, so whether we're going to, yeah, take it away, and we'll look at it. And so we, Gail, did you get?
Is it something as simple as just authorizing the board to make a submission? The Fix the Finances Committee to make a submission?
I think that's what it is.
And motion by trustee Collard, seconded by trustee Pappan. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. So what we'll do is we'll create a Google Doc, and we'll try to share some potential ways of wording so that we, before we submit, because it's due midnight on Sunday. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're now up to the director's report. Director Miller.
Thanks, Chair Amos. I have one very quick item. I put it in the Director's Weekly, but I thought it was important and significant enough to say in a public forum. A vice principal of ours at White Oaks Secondary School, Kate Rain, won a Peace Medal from the YMCA. One of very few people that wins that award. She won it and was nominated for her work with our Student Success students, Life Skills students, and those students at White Oaks North Campus, who have some great challenges and needs in life. And she is doing much to address those challenges and needs for those kids. An addendum to the story is that, as part of that, she was provided a bursary of $500. She immediately turned around and donated that $500 to the Halton Learning Foundation to support the very kids that she's won a Peace Medal for supporting, so. That's my report for tonight.
Thank you. Is there any comments or questions for the director tonight? Seeing none? Okay, we're now up to the communications from the chair. I'd just like to thank everyone, once again, for your support of me for the next year. I can't tell you how much it means to me, so thank you. We will be sending out the Striking Committee report, probably tomorrow. We'll just have to make sure it's up to date because the French Advisory Committee will be on there with the new description, looking for trustees. And. Advisory Committee will be on there with the new description, looking for trustees, and Vice Chair Graves and I would ask that you make your selections and send it back to just us and not to, out to everyone, so that everybody because there's been quite a few people who have said they've indicated an interest in things that they haven't been able to do in the past, and after we've been there for two years, people now have had an opportunity to see different things, so there may be a little bit of change-up in some of the committees. So, just send it to Vice Chair Graves and I, and then at next week's Committee of the Whole meeting, we will have a discussion around the Striking Committee, all of us, and we will share everybody's preferences, and we can have discussions. Did you want to speak to that? No? You're okay? Okay. Okay. And that's all I have. Trustee questions and comments? Trustee Oliver? Nope, trustee Gribens? They're bouncing around.
Thank you, Chair Amos. Well, it's coding week, Hour of Code. I was happy to see that the ministry is going to support coding in the schools. Woo-hoo! And I was at a school on Monday. It was at Rolling Meadows, and they did a school-wide Hour of Code event where they matched up different classes, and they worked together. So, I got to see grade eights with grade ones and grade eights with kindergartens and grade sevens, like, all mixed together, working together, and it was amazing how engaged these kids were. There were kids that are not normally so engaged in, in school, working with grade ones, and there was one one gentleman in grade eight who I was watching him working with this little girl, and I said to him, "Wow, you are so patient." Because he was facilitating her. He was saying, "What should we do next? What should, you know, what does the puppy need to do?" Because the puppy had to do some things, and they would code it together. And I said, "Wow, you are so patient," and he turned to me and he said, "I have never been told I have any patience." So, it was, it was an amazing moment. I think it was an aha for him that, you know, he could mentor and he could work along with the other kids, and that, that coding is, was a great tool for him to do that. And I saw it all over the school. The teachers were not, you know, teaching the kids coding. The kids were doing it themselves, and they were working together to learn. It was fascinating, and it was fantastic, and I hope it continues.
Thank you. And something I should have mentioned is we did send the letter about coding in the curriculum to the minister, so. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you. I will be brief. I have just a few items. One, I would like to express my thanks and appreciation for being asked to be one of the judges of the Spoken Words Slam on Monday. Next year, if you have the opportunity to attend this, please do so. Four high schools took part, and there were four rounds, and the, the subjects and the talent that came out was beyond amazing. Craig Kilbarger Secondary School did win again for the second year in a row, although they were given a very close run for their money by Burlington Central. One of the kids won overtime, and I think that made the deciding factor. But it was a phenomenal experience, and I highly recommend, if you can attend next year, to do so. I'd like to send up congratulations to WIDX's Catherine Carley. She won gold in the 2017 Skate Canada Challenge. And as well, I know CKSS is your school, but I'll ask your indulgence because this was one of my, one of my daughter's teachers. Kevin Holdgra, Holdcroft was given the OPSA Leadership and School Spirit Award, so congratulations to him as well.
Wow, that's great. Trustee Oliver?
Thank you. Through your chair. Last Friday, I had the honor of presenting the Inspire Award to Ms. Jennifer Peace, an intermediate classroom teacher at Captain R. Wilson. And I was able to present this award during the recognition assembly, which was really an exciting a new thing for me, and definitely one of my highlights as a trustee. So, I appreciate that opportunity. Thank you.
That's awesome. And, whoop, somebody snuck in under the wire again. Trustee Al Harrison?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. Congratulations to Oakwood School. They won the Farm to Cafeteria Canada Award for increasing the amount of local food served and eaten at their school. And I understand that they'll be launching a fresh salad bar in their K to five school in the new year, so that's exciting. I hope to eat there a whole bunch. And secondly, I just wanted to report back that Southwest Oakville Schools are collaborating on an initiative called Rock Your Locks. I believe I mentioned it before, where students will be coming together at TA Blake Lock to, for a mass hair donation event. Approximately 150 students have signed up after hearing a really moving story from a person who currently wears a wig due to her cancer treatment. So, it's been a great collaboration process so far. The date is March 23rd, and I plan to participate in case anybody else would like to as well. I'd be happy to send the information. Thanks.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers, I'd just like to take this opportunity to wish everyone happy holidays because this is our last board meeting of the year, and most of our senior admin won't be at our Committee of the Whole meeting next year, so I hope, unless, unless the director changes his
I want them all to.
I, I wish you health and happiness for the new year, and I hope you have a great time with your families, so. All the best for the season. Now, can I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Daniele is seconded by trustee Gray. All those in favor?
Smoke came off Daniele's arm.
I felt the breeze. But you have to sign off. Trustee Al Harrison? You not, you don't want to shut the meeting down? You can't do it?
I told you. I was doctoring this thing, so there always is. Unless it's a motion for you.
You did, it says you voted. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Well, that's interesting. Good night, everyone.